You are ready to turn your mic on, you want me to turn it on? I got you.
Good evening, everyone. It's six o'clock. I'll call this meeting of the county board supervisors to work. We're walking in our youth government group tonight. We're sitting in for a while, so welcome. We're all here. Supervisor Conrad is on Zoom and Supervisor Vespoli has car troubles, so we expect he'll be a little bit late. At the neighborhood posting, this meeting was posted by the clerk's office appropriately. We'll rise for a moment of silent prayer and flag the movement.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The packet included the minutes from our last meeting. Does anyone have any corrections that need to be done? There being none, we'll leave them as recorded. Our first presentation is the sheriff's office presentation. And the floor is yours, Mr. Sheriff.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, there has been some questions and concerns and maybe some misconceptions about what the what the Washington County Sheriff's Office does, does not do what we can do, we can't do in regards to immigration. And I did a presentation to Public Safety last month. It was, yeah, it made it a good idea for the full county board to hear it directly from myself. So first off, we have to kind of start with a premise that immigration is federally a federal issue. The deputies or law enforcement officers that are out on the road, there's really not so little actual immigration enforcement that takes place because they simply don't have the authority to do it. I'll get into exactly what that means. So the civil, the civil immigration status violation is not a criminal violation. I know it's kind of ironic to say here illegally and then say it's not a criminal violation. But what it is, it's a civil status violation of the federal law. And the local law enforcement doesn't have the ability to force that civil violation. There comes a time when we do, I'm getting to exactly what that means. So the civil status of being here illegally is either here undocumented or if you're here after your visa expires, it's a civil status violation. So the three hits that law enforcement officer could have when he's on patrol and he has contacted somebody that's not here illegally, but it's not here illegally. The first one is called an N Sears violation. And what that is, that's called the National Security Entry Exit Service Registry. And what that is, is that's the mere fact of being here without documentation and being here legally. The second one is if you, if the individual is on scoundrel and that means that they were, they had a court proceeding and failed to show up for the next procedure. The third one is if you were a felon. That's exactly what that is, that somebody was deported as a felon and came back to the states and this kind of section of the case. So all that is to our criminal violations, those are things that that are orders signed by magistrate, by a judge. And that's a criminal violation where law enforcement has the authority to detain but arrest, bring into our custody and hold for ICE. The law enforcement generally in Washington County doesn't give a whole lot of the latter to the deported felons and the scoundrels. But there is a time when there's an intersection with the N Sears, the status violation and the sheriff's office. And that's kind of what I wanted to talk about, is when those two things intersect together. So the process invariably starts with some type of criminal violation of state law. That could be federal offense, that could be burglary or domestic or any host of state crimes. One said individual and that can be brought in by any municipality in Washington County. During the booking process, and this matters not who it is, our jail collects information from those individuals. That includes photos, prints, address, race, ethnicity, citizenship, country of birth. And that we've been doing for years. That's not a change in practice. We've been doing that since I was official cop on patrol. And there is some limitations as to what correctional officers can do to try to identify people. A lot of times people come to our jail, they don't have a identification on them. They don't carry their driver's license. They don't have a personal certificate. They have nothing on them, so it's less is verbal or fingerprints, which I'll get into. And so once the way with citizenship, for example, if, you know, they say when they were born in Mexico or they were out of wherever the case may be, and then they said that they're a US citizen, but then they can't provide us with a social security number. I mean, that's kind of a flag that maybe something is up on the office. But then when someone is booked into our jail, it invariably involves the fingerprinting part of it. And those fingerprints are shared with, they're submitted to the state of Wisconsin. The state of Wisconsin then submits them to the FBI. The FBI has a sharing agreement with ICE and provides the fingerprints to ICE. ICE then compares the biometrics of the fingerprints and decides if the individual is subject to deportation. Now, sometimes there's a little bit of lag in that booking process where they don't get the fingerprints anywhere. That could be in the subject of cooperating in the booking process or one problem that happens. One of the things that the sheriff's office does, and I think we're probably, I'm not sure there's another sheriff's office that does it, but every day we send odd man reports to ICE and WATI of two different reports. Number one is the prior 24 hours of bookings of all foreign-born individuals in our facility. And then a second report that documents just the total foreign-born individuals in our custody. That sends automatically every single day. And then what ICE can do is then they decide if they want to place the detainer on the individual for deportation. But that, and that's where the N Sears violations kind of intersect with the sheriff's office. With the detainers, they are really just voluntary requests from ICE that we notify them when the individuals are completely done with their criminal charges, all the state charges are done. They want, they like to be notified. And then we have been holding those individuals for up to 48 hours after completion of the state sentence for them to take off. And as we've been doing that for years and years. Who may have seen a news article today, US News or Daily News rather, of that I decided to enter into the 287G program. I did this because there are some legal inconsistencies, I would say, among if that 48-hour window that I'm talking about, you know, the sheriffs, local sheriffs have the authority to hold those individuals without any state charges. The ICE detainer and subsequent administrative warrants, it's not signed by a judge. It's a warrant from immigration that's signed by actual ICE. And so there's some question as to legality of holding those individuals. And then in, along with that ICE detainer, accompanies an administrative ICE warrant, I-200. That warrant, because it's a customs administrative type of thing, it has to be served on the individual in question by someone of a federal authority to serve those immigration warrants. As I mentioned to you, local cops, we don't have authorities to do that. The reason why I entered into this 287 agreement is to mitigate the risk, the financial risk to our taxpayers for that 48-hour window. As I am, you, that's in the process of being through. And what it does in essence is it allows our jail correction sergeants, it gives them a federal authority, a federal agents to be able to serve that administrative warrant during that 48-hour period, thus mitigating the argument that the individuals are not being held. So they're, they're acting on behalf of ICE, but just within the confines of our jail. And just to give you a sense of, of the how often it happens in our jail this morning, I have 248 inmates in our custody. And then we are currently holding seven individuals on ICE detainers. And they're, therefore some pretty serious, some property crimes, some sexually violent crimes as well. The other thing that we do is we take part in the SCAP program. It's called the State Criminal Healing Assistance Program. And that is, it's a program that's designed to recapture some federal dollars for for individuals that we are holding in custody. Sometimes if they're boarded, sometimes they're not. That's part of our reporting process as well. And I also do that too, because as a steward of taxpayer dollars, it really is designed to recapture some of the federal funding. Well, what is a federal problem? It's not really a county problem. It's not big dollars. I think last year it was maybe $8,000, but it's still something to offset our budget. Our closest working relationship that we have with ICE is actually through HSI. It's a Homeland Securities Investigation. If you're not familiar with what HSI is, they are really the ICE detectives, I guess I would say. And we have one of our deputies that is federally sworn as an HSI investigator. He works part-time, two days a week on multi-jurisdictional cases. And that's probably, that is really our closest working tie with Homeland Security, because we actually have one of a sworn officer of HSI within our organization. Besides that HSI link, every supervisor in our department has the contact information of the deportation officer with Milwaukee ICE. We have their desk phone, cell phone, email address, and we can contact them if there's some egregious violations. Now, having said all of that, I'm a letter of the law type of guy. But I also just want to impress upon the board that as a sheriff, I represent everyone in this county. And I can't have an individual that is spiritual to contact law enforcement or call 911 if they need help or if they are a victim of a crime. So I just want to make it clear to the board that the immigration stuff that we are doing is really within just the confines of the jail. It doesn't expand the footprints. There are some, some federal programs. The 287G program has three different variants. Number one is that warrant service model. That's the one that I chose to do in Washington County. They have the jail service, jail enforcement model, which is a little different than the warrant model, where they actually do immigration investigation than enforcement inside the jail. I didn't think that was particularly necessary. And then they also are reinstating the task force model. And that's where they swear parole officers to do immigration enforcement outside the confines of the jail. And I just didn't think that was necessary. Like I said, that's a federal problem. It's not a local problem. So happy to answer any questions. That's kind of the first overview of it.
Thank you for all that information. If anyone have a question. Thank you very much for the presentation. Our next item is 4A, tax deed partial, P1-017400A. What we're doing with tax deed features is changing because there's a new law. So I'll have our deputy attorney explain that.
I believe this, I believe this, thank you, Chairman. I believe this issue is on a prior agenda as well. The county took a property located in the town of Addison by tax deed on October 16th, 2024. Since then, the taxes owed on the property have been paid in the amount of a little over $10,000. So it covered all the back taxes and associated costs. According to our code, section 4910, the former owner is given credits, preference to repurchase the property that was taken subject to the tax deed so long as they meet all the requirements of the code. And at this time, this particular former owner did meet all the requirements by paying all the back taxes and fees. So at this point in time, we need to transfer the deed back to the original owner. So we just need a motion to approve that.
Motion by Supervisor Mary, second by Supervisor Toma. Any further discussions or questions? There will be none. We'll vote by voice. All in favor, say aye.
I have it electronic.
We have to do it electronically?
You don't have to, but I have it going right now.
Okay, we'll do it electronically. Passes unanimously. Next up is ordinance five, display of flags on county property. It's pretty well explained in the package. Both by Supervisor Krebs, second by Supervisor Kelly. Any discussion? There being none. We'll also vote electronically on this.
One second.
If you're ready.
Almost there.
Hang on while the electronic catches up.
Unanimous.
Passes unanimously. Next is item 5B, resolution 63. You're sending funding and authorizing the termination of the radio tower lease with American Tower Corporation in the town of Erin. Motion in the second, please Supervisor Schwab, Supervisor Bossa. Any discussion? Supervisor Krebs.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the back, I forgot there a window is the lease actually, because it only refers to a starting date of 2009. The five-year rentals, so I think that says 2024.
2025.
Mr. Chairman, based on your chief public safety officer, that lease will end at the end of this year. Yes, because you're defunding it, potentially defunding it by this board's action. And as a result, through the budget process, the termination of the lease is on the 80-day notification. Notifying them that we will not fund it. And by virtue of the binding process, that will subsequently happen with your action this fall.
Okay. The other question is, the tower, is there any equipment to remove?
Any further discussion? Then we'll vote electronically. Supervisor Vespoli, we're voting on resolution 63.
Missing one.
We're missing one vote.
And then, okay, yep, yep, then unanimous.
Absolutely unanimously. Next up is resolution 64 for continuation of funding of the next generation housing program. And I'll point out that this is just another sunset clause. We're already funding it. This is just putting a look back on it. Move by Supervisor Schulteis, second by Supervisor Vespoli. Any discussion? What do I try to do?
There it goes. Sorry. I don't want to go. Okay, so it passes 20 to one.
It passes 20 to one. Next up is resolution 65, authorizing the Washington County Information Technology Department to provide information technology services to the town of Farmington as part of the shared revenue of the county sales tax. Motion, please Supervisor Shadron, Supervisor Gallas. Any discussion or question? There being, oh, Supervisor Gallas.
Just curious, if we continue to take order this, which I think is a good thing for the for the community at large, because we get some really good skills and abilities and abilities. But last time we did this, we said we had capacity. I'm assuming that we continue to have enough capacity to handle not only these needs, but the county in general.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallas. Mr. Chairman, yes, I think what we're going to do right now is, looking at our workload right now, we're probably taking on these two and pausing as far as any other municipalities currently. So letting up, these will be the last two kind of indoors, so to speak. And then we have some time to catch our breath a little bit, make sure we're doing a good job, positive feedback from what we've been working with so far. We also want to make sure we're getting the same positive feedback from our constituents in science building as well, including the sheriff's office and their level service. So what we have to do is get these on boarded, pause, and then probably set the budget passive again this summer, is revisit this and see where we're at.
Thank you for the excellent explanation. Any other questions? And we'll vote electronically. This is also a simple majority vote.
Wait, never mind. We're good. It passes.
It passes 20 to nothing with one abstention. Next up is resolution 66, authorizing Washington County Information Technology Department to provide information technology services to the town of Kewaspen as part of the shared revenue of the county sales tax. Now, motion in the second, please Supervisor Schwab, Supervisor Toma. Any discussion or questions? There being none, we'll vote electronically. This is also a simple majority vote.
20 to one.
Also passes 20 to nothing with one abstention. Next, we have resolution 67. Authorizing the Washington County Geographic Informations Department, Assistant Department to provide GIS services to the town of Trenton as part of the shared revenue grant program. Motion in the second, Supervisor Bossa, Supervisor Bailey. Any discussion? There being none, we'll vote electronically. Looking for a simple majority vote.
Unanimous.
Passes unanimously. Next is resolution 68 to authorize the annually drawn-up tax grant funds to the sheriff's office from the county treasurer's office. Motion in the second, Supervisor Newman, Supervisor Trump. Motion in the second Supervisor Newman, Supervisor Trump. Any questions or discussion? Supervisor Krebs.
Mr. Chairman, um, I guess I'm not sure who to direct the question to, but wondering why the money's being returned to the sheriff's department versus the general.
The sheriff looks like he's ready to answer.
I'm gonna try to answer that. So what, but this is an effort to do, so first off, the sheriff's office is not in the business of trying to generate revenue from arrests. That's not, that's not involved, but there is an element of financial deterrence when you're talking about dealing with uh, drug dealers. Well, we're the F, the, what this is trying to do is statutorily treat all evidence the same. Through county board action, the money could be uh, could be uh, treated the same way that we treat um, physical property evidence. So that's what this is for. So it happened for years. It has been going back to the uh, the general upon. A lot of this money, we probably would have sought seizure, uh, uh, forfeiture seizure action to, to retain those uh, uh, funds. But the problem is, is those seizures, the civil action, that has to be done within thirty days of the seizure. And that's very practical when we're dealing with evidence, money as evidence. Because it's needed to, or so, if the money was not needed to have evidence, we probably would have sought the seizure of money through a civil. The act of one moment, then just and to re-break up with the difference between money versus other property seize. Sure, how are they treated different? So statutorily, the, the, the money has to go through this unclaimed fund process. Which unless the county has your process that the act refers to. Right, okay, correct, yeah. The, the property, I'll give you the example of, let's say we uh, have a Nerewine girl and we seize a shovel that they're using to cultivate, that's evidence. Um, at the end of the case, we can dispose of that evidence however we see fit. If we need a shovel, we, we can, we can put that into our fleet of tools. With money has to go through this other process and plus allows us to uh, to use that. It's actually a very small amount of, of money that we're talking about in our, just to give you a, a perspective. I think in our, our, our asset forfeiture fund of drug money, I think we have around a quarter of a million dollars in that fund. Um, this is uh, last year, I think it was six hundred dollars, maybe a little over seven thousand dollars, so it's a much smaller. But we do try to, the, with drug forfeiture money, what we typically try to do is to keep the drug unit operation specifically vehicles off of the tax levy, because we go through so many different vehicles, you can imagine, for using them for those pets operation, we can't use the same vehicle. Um, so we rotate vehicles a lot, definitely reliable funds for. Okay. I personally don't think that this money should be going back to the sheriff's department directly. I believe that it should go to the general funds, so it's just to kind of help separate a conflict of interest on it, so I will be supportive of it.
Is anyone else wish to speak? In that case, we'll vote electronically.
It says eighteen to three.
It passes eighteen to three. Next up, we have resolution sixty nine, which is a grant application from the Wisconsin Department of Military Affairs, PSAT grant, full grant um, for this year. Motion in the second, please Supervisor Hartway, Supervisor Mary. Any questions? That's pretty well in the package. Being no questions. We'll vote electronically. This one requires a two-thirds majority.
Unanimous.
It passes unanimously. Resolution seventy calls for extension of the Washington County Park and Open Phase Plan to twenty thirty five. Um, and you might have seen in your package, um, Marx Park, Marx Forest, Marx Woods was in there yet. And also remind me, Lizard Mountain was still in there. So those have been taken out of the package as of today. So that's a friendly change to what you might have seen. Um, any other discussion? Supervisor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so those items that were left in, um, basically letting you give the history of what was going on with that. This whole plan, um, you remember our discussion of Glacier Hills, we're seeking grant funding for Glacier Hills Park.
But you hold just a second so I can get more comment back. Supervisor Brynmore. Supervisor Kelly. You may proceed.
Okay, um, so as part of the uh, grant funding that we're seeking from the state, they do require an updated uh, plan. And so that was what was done. Um, the only part that really required the update was the statistical information that you see in the plan. So the number of residents and those kinds of statistics. So that's what was updated. They really didn't pull stuff out and change anything significantly from the other parts of the plan. Uh, the requirement of the state was merely to update those statistics, which were done. Um, so with this now being in place, we now legally qualify for the grants that we're gonna seek for Glacier Hills from the state. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you for the explanation. Any other comments? There being none, vote electronically.
Unanimous.
It passes unanimously. Our final item is resolution seventy one, awarding the sale of ten million dollars general obligation promissory notes. Um, which we voted for previously. This is simply issuing the notes. So motion in the second, please Supervisor Toma, Supervisor Schwab. Any discussion? I think we'll have this Hammers explain a little bit. Um, we don't do this very often, so and this would also be good for the younger people in the audience, how this works.
You have to turn.
So, uh, previous meeting last month, I believe, um, you guys approved an initial resolution for the debt issue, which was very similar in format, but you're approving tonight. So um, that initial resolution is basically just giving us permission to issue this debt, put it out for bid, to see what rates we can get for that issue. Um, so once that was completed, they went out for bid today, uh, or the bids closed today, um. And we received multiple offers back. Um, PMA, our financial advisor is here, they can kind of walk you through some of the details. They have a short presentation in your packet that people go through. Um, but basically the um, rates came back at about three point three percent. So the resolution that you're approving tonight is the resolution to actually approve that debt to be issued. So, um, for us to take in the proceeds and move forward with the project. So I'm gonna turn it over to Charlie. He's from PMA, that's our financial advisor. He can kind of walk through the presentation. And then if there's any questions, we can vote through those as well.
Thank you.
Thank you all for having me. I'm having Mr. Charlie. As Margie said, I'm here from PMA Securities. Sorry, just walked through today's sale, you know, the interest rates you got, a little bit of maybe what the county is looking through in the future. And then taking any questions you guys have on, on the subject. So I believe Margie provided you all the, the presentation and I'll just sort of walk through that. So as we said, ten million dollars on general obligations sold this morning. So we took the bids. And before I get into that, I'll go through this little bit of the interest rate background, interest rate perspective on what we're seeing in the market today. So slide one here is the MMD curve, so that municipal market data. That's essentially the golden standard for what we're seeing for interest rates in the municipal bond market. And the curve is based on the triple A general obligation, obligation rating, which Washington County does have a triple A rating. But parlayed very nicely, well, she has her statement. So for this uh, for this debt issue, it was a ten-year issue. So you guys are kind of living in the space of that middle line, that green line there. And this um, chart is from twenty twenty four present, so we're seeing a little bit of updates in interest rates since around this time last year. But overall, relatively, relatively good, I'd say, for what we're seeing in the market and what um, issuers are getting right now. The next slide is the competitive sale results. So we had, we'll be considered a very uh, successful sale this morning for a, of the larger, and that's what the banks nationally came in to play with their bids, and we landed on a true interest cost or take of three point three four percent they come. And then you can see uh, Jeff Reed's Bank of New York on the sale, and then the other three that everybody listed there as well. A little bit on the issue purpose and structure. So the purpose of the issue is to pay costs for non-work at county buildings as well as various road practice in the county. And then, as Margie said, we took in the sales today and we're, we'll be looking at if approved, a, a standard three week close. Meaning the fund would be actually just, I think, going on, you know, second point is about three weeks from now. And then a little bit for the repayment of this, the principal will be repaid over ten years, as I said, and that will be starting by now on March twenty twenty six, March first. And then that'll be through uh, twenty thirty five. But the first interest payment also be next March first. Um, this issue did not have a call provision, so non-callable, meaning the county will be responsible for paying and acting on the debt schedule that we're laying out here. There will be no um, option per se for prepayment and early payment of the debt. And that's a little reason that that is, because we're seeing non-callable issues um, coming with a lower take at your interest cost. And the county felt that was a good way to go. And then credit rating, as I alluded to, Washington County is one of seven counties in the state to pay triple A ratings. So that's um, the highest rating we can get, and I think that is ultimately reflected in the attractive uh, interest rate we guys receive there. The next slide is a little bit on your pricing summary and kind of layout of the debt. So you can see here there was uh, maturities from twenty twenty six through twenty thirty five. And we're also listing the maturity values and yields per maturity. So when this gets um, this gets bid out, you know, they're proposing coupons and yields, um, which ultimately make up your total interest cost. And we're setting the maturity values ultimately to, you know, correspond, correspond with the county's wishes for how they want the debt to be set up. So you're, then you have level uh, taxes and and now, and that's like um, a little bit on on the bid premium, which you'll see on the next slide as well. So when you go up to bid, um, the banks ultimately suggest coupons that they would like to receive. And then sometimes those coupons are much higher to be attracted to investors than the yield. So essentially, although you see these coupons between five percent, four percent, your, your yields and true interest costs are ultimately much lower. And the way that that um, kind of comes to be is that you get an additional six hundred and fifty thousand dollars of what we call bid premium for capitalized interest on the closing day, which is applied to that service in the first year. So funds that you don't have to levy for, and it is applied to that service for everything that the, this is. Now, the following slide is just a little bit more of the debt breakdown of your debt schedule, showing the exact payment dates, principal amounts, and then total principal and interest owed by the county over the next ten years for repayment of this issue, of this issue. Um, so you'll see ten million in principal and then a little, a little under two point seven million in interest uh, repaid by the county over the life of the issue. And the uh, last slide we had is the financing plan. So once again, showing the final numbers from today's sale for the ten million dollar issue that we're looking at approval for tonight, and then showing the potential for a twenty twenty seven issue of twenty five million for various projects in the county as well, which is something that um, we've been working with Margie on in the finance department, something that should be coming down by. That is all I have to do, as uncertainly available, we take any questions that anybody has on the segment.
Supervisor Krebs, did you have a question? Okay. Um, along the line, I was surprised to see this twenty five million as an example. Um, but I know that the county executive expressed that the rate that we got was almost a whole one less than what was expected. So um, looking at future projects, we might be borrowing more in the not too distant future, expecting interest rates to go up after that. So we'll be thinking about that going forward. Supervisor Bosser.
So I'm looking at the chart on page two. And then I'm also kind of coordinating that with page three and then the callable feature. So the chart on page two seems to show that the average rate for ten years is right around three percent. Like three point zero zero roughly. Now, you mentioned we would get a higher rate if we had a callable one, so that we could pay early. And the rate we're giving is three point three four percent. That's a whole third of a percentage point above what the average is. And I know we have outstanding credit rate. Um, we have the ability to borrow a billion dollars without going with referendum. We have very low debt. We're under twenty billion in debt. Now, I don't know the exact number offhand. Any idea why that's for a non-callable, a third of a point above average?
Yeah, that's a good question. So I, I think a couple of things are at play. Um, this chart only goes um, through March second, so we have seen a little bit of pump taking rates due to some potential um, volatility based on things going on at the federal level. So I have, we have seen a little bit of volatility in the market um, in the last two weeks here, leave yourself. And then I think another piece of that is um, just the fact that I'm trying to get my wording right here. Um, and the cost of issuance is not probably the MMD curve, so you guys, you know, have your standard fees, your rating agency fee, bond council fee, the Dallas municipal advisory fee. And um, so those are, those are adding on to your interest costs as well.
Okay, how much more would it be if we had a callable?
I would say probably ten to fifteen basis points higher for callable right on.
Okay, when you say a basis point, does that have a tenth of a percentage?
Like point one five would be fourteen basis.
Okay, so it'd be a hundred of a percentage. So, okay, so point one five there. You think, and guess we did call. Okay. Hey, thank you.
Any other discussion? There being none, we'll vote electronically. Oh, Supervisor Dallas.
I see we're practically one point three million for both payments, then higher reverse to the lower word twenty, is that, is that right? I'm looking at uh, the page in the debt service page. The working budget, you're open here and that's.
Uh, yeah, that is right. So we've got another debt that we should be planning to see that'll be dropping off. So to try and keep our debt payments level between all of our debt issues. Um, it's kind of structured that once, one debt drops off, we're kind of rolling that payment into the, the next bit. So that's why I won't, it's not lax amongst this issue, it's lax amongst all of our issues and obligations.
And last month, and uh, Chair Schleif uh, intimated that we were just paid in the higher amount, so we're coming in at a lower amount. Um, so how, how does that fit into the budget?
Um, so twenty twenty five's budget, there's no impact right now, because we don't pay. Uh, so twenty twenty-five's budget, we're, there's only back right now, because there's no payments. Um, we've been starting on the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget, so we'll just incorporate action numbers in that.
Anyone else wish to speak? We'll vote electronically. This is a simple majority, because it's issuing the bonds that we already voted for.
Unanimous.
It passes unanimously. Our next meeting date is April twenty-ninth, twenty seventy-five. This meeting's adjourned.